I'd like to call this meeting of August 11th of the Board of Selectmen back in order. Before we begin, I'm sure many of you saw, but in case those haven't, we had a great loss on July 31, Dr. Reverend Kenneth Knox passed away. Reverend Knox served on many town committees. He was the chairman of the Cemetery Commission. He served as chaplain for the Auburn Fire Department for many years. And at this time, I'd ask you to please join me in a moment of silence for Reverend Knox. Thank you. His kindness and generosity will be sorely missed here in Auburn. If we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the first item we have is public comment, and we have Joe Hamel, who's going to speak to a June 23 vote of the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Hamel?
Joe Hamel, 39 Miriam Street. On the June 23 meeting with Board of Selectmen, Mr. Carpenter, under item Board of Selectmen, item numbers 10B, requests that the Board remove the vote count when reporting recommendations to town meeting. I believe that the residents and the town meeting members should know the vote count. I'm gonna, I'll bring this up again when we have the full board.
Thank you, Mr. Hamel. And next, we have Mike McNamara, who wants to speak to Revolution of 1774.
Thank you, and good evening.
Name an address for the record, please.
What's that?
Name an address for the record, please.
My name is Mike McNamara, for Maywood Circle. And thank you for letting me speak this evening. I'd just like to give you an update on an event that's going to be happen, happening in the city of Worcester on September 7. It's called the Worcester Revolution of 1774. And tomorrow evening, at 5 o'clock, there'll be an information session at the Auburn Webster Lodge of Elks at 754 Southbridge Street. A little information on what the Worcester Revolution of 1774 is about. In September of 1774, thousands of Central Massachusetts militiamen put an end to British rule in rural Massachusetts, two years before the signing of the Declaration of Independence. The men and women of Worcester County fought and won their own revolution without firing a shot. So the information session tomorrow night, 5 o'clock, at the Auburn Webster Lodge of Elks, at the downstairs hall. We'll talk about the event on September 7 to be held in Worcester. You can come and learn about a professional play telling the story of the Worcester Revolution, colonial crafts and music, kids' activities, author Ray Raphael's book signing and talk, historical reenactment tours and discussions, walking the gauntlet reenactment, food and more. So it proves, plans to be a very, very big day in the city of Worcester and Auburn, and many other towns are involved in this event. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McNamara.
Before he goes, can-
Mr. McNamara, Mr. Simontian has a question.
Sure. I was just wondering, since this is tomorrow night, and I know that the Board has been invited to a 6:00 PM tour of the new middle school, would it be possible to give some of the information from this meeting to the town? Because I, chances are, by the time I get out of work, I'll barely, I'll make it to the tour of the middle school, and I won't be able to make it to this as much as interested in history. So if you have information that you could leave with the town or get to us, that would be-
Sure, I could, I could find out other informational sessions-
Okay.
-that are going to be held and get that information-
All right.
-to the town manager or to Sharon and pass along.
That would be, thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other questions?
That's all, thank you, Mr. McNamara.
Thank you.
So because of scheduling conflicts, I'll entertain a motion to move up Town Manager, item 9B, which is the vote to enter into an intermunicipal agreement, Central Mass Regional Equipment Cooperative.
Motion to move up item 9B.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Okay.
Thank you very much, through the chair. This item is a follow-up to a regional CIC grant that the town of Auburn participated in with five, there were five communities, Auburn, Barry, Hubbardston, Paxton and Rutland. And we received a grant for the purchase of a bucket truck. Rutland, the town of Rutland was the lead community. And this is a follow-up to that. It's an agreement that allows for the sharing of that equipment and hopefully sharing of other equipment down the road. And here with us tonight to answer any questions and maybe just give a quick summary of the agreement is Janet Pierce from the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, if you want to come up. I also want to note while Janet is coming up-
Janet, you're welcome to come up to the table here. I see you have notes.
Jeff Mitchell, the Assistant DPW Director, as well as the Sewer Commissioner, has also been very active in this. He's been the point person for the town on this intermunicipal agreement, as well as the grant.
Hi, Janet. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for having me here today, and congratulations on the awarding of this Community Innovative Challenge Grant. Originally, the grant was submitted for the purchase of a bucket truck. And once we obtained various state contract bids, the bucket truck came in lower than what was anticipated. So we will be purchasing a 12-inch chipper to accompany the bucket truck as well. This agreement, as part of the grant that was written, the overall grant was $193,675. Of that, the equipment purchase is $188,675, with administrative and legal fees of $5,000. As part of the grant, we also agreed, when you signed off on it back in November of 2013, to create a group to oversee the sharing of this equipment. And through our working group, we've been getting together the first Tuesday of every month since April. Jeff Mitchell has been present at all of those working meetings. And we've prepared this agreement. It has gone through legal counsel for the town of Rutland. The group agreed to have one legal counsel look it over to try to save some of the legal expenses. And we formed the group called the Central Mass Regional Equipment Cooperative. So this is an intermunicipal agreement, entering in with the other four towns that Julie had mentioned. The town of Barry signed off on it on July 7, Hubbardston on June 30, and Rutland just last Tuesday on August 5. I believe Paxton is meeting this evening as well, their Board of Selectmen. So entertain any questions you may have.
The agreement is in your packet, the intermunicipal agreement. It's towards the back because we moved it up. Yes. So this is just the legal agreement of what we had discussed and voted on previously. Authorize the manager to move forward with this. Ms. Jacobson, did you have any, anything you wanted to add before we-
The only thing I would add is I've also reviewed this, along with Jeff Mitchell and Bill Coyle, the DPW Director. We actually made some comments on the original draft, which have been incorporated into this agreement. So we are likewise comfortable with this agreement. Over time, there is a, I believe there's a $1,000 allocation on an annual basis, up to $1,000, for any kinds of repairs that's needed for the equipment. We think this is a fair estimate of what it would cost. There are points that, you know, it may offset other costs that we have that we do now have to go out and sub some of this work, as the other communities do. So having the access to both a chipper and a bucket truck, at the end, it's, it's a much, far more economical use of our dollars. And I think the other thing I just want to mention on this agreement is I think it sets the structure in place for future sharing of equipment. So should we apply, as this particular group, for any additional CIC grants? We now have a mechanism in place for operating shared equipment.
Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Simontian.
In section three, where it talks about the sharing of expenses, it says that the Board that's formed from the members of each municipality, at the start of each fiscal year, each community will contribute a sum of money annually, and it will be determined annually by the Board. So that suggests to me that it's not a set amount annually? And if it's not a set amount, what's, what's that going to be based on?
It's going to be on the Board's discretion. The Board will be formed by a member of the Board of Selectmen from each of the five communities, and also the DPW Directors or designees. It'll be determined, be determined by the Board as far as what type of maintenance may be required, the cost of the insurance as an overall group. As the equipment ages, you may wish to put more money into it. It may require more maintenance costs. But you can look at the history through the year before. The money will also be set into a special revenue account so that it will not close out.
Okay. And I, I have one follow-up to that. So routinely, we, we take votes on declaring equipment, surplus equipment, when it's reached or close to end of life. And how will that be handled by this group, since it's shared equipment, as some of these reach end of life? And I know that's down the road, because it's a fairly new thing. But I'm just curious how, you know, how would that, since it's multiple towns involved, how would they handle that? Will it be the Board that's formed that does that?
Yes. Yes, the Board will oversee all equipment sharing of this equipment and equipment in the future. And if I may just add, the CIC, for calendar year 2015, the applications were just made available today, and the application deadline is Friday, October 10. And the group is already working towards equipment sharing ideas for the next round of grants.
I didn't, I didn't have a chance to go through the whole thing, so if some of the information's in here, I apologize. But as far as any future equipment, is that something that will be discussed by the Board and then come back to the different municipalities as to an agreement that that is in fact something that's needed? Or does the Board supersede?
No.
Okay.
Because in order to participate in the Community Innovative Challenge Grants, the Boards of Selectmen, the individual boards, have to sign off-
Okay.
-as far as approving the application and supporting the application and sustaining it into the future.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So how soon after, if the Board votes to authorize this tonight, how soon after these votes are taken, is this Board designated and expected to meet, shall I say, just for initial meeting, to understand who the players are?
It's anticipated that the Board will meet quarterly, as soon as everyone signs off, hopefully first thing in the fall. I know Paxton will be voting either tonight or next week. They're on a summer schedule as well. So as soon as we receive all of the endorsements back, the sign-offs, I will reach out to all of you and set up a meeting. I would assume at night, it's probably easier unless you designate someone. At that point, we would have your designations made, whether it's someone on your Board, or Julie, or someone else representing you as a Board to serve on the Board.
And, and you said it would be a member of the Board of Selectmen and the DPW Director or equivalent of each community?
That's correct. That's correct. So there'll be 10 Board members.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion. That would be 9B.
One, one other question. There's five towns currently, and are other towns able to join at some point, or?
We actually had six originally. The town of Okam had also signed on to the CIC grant. The Selectmen decided not to participate in the actual program, the grant that has been awarded. That will be discussed by the Board. Say, for instance, you wanted to purchase a larger piece of equipment that perhaps maybe your community would be comfortable only using once a year, where you may want to reach out to 12 communities so that it could be shared equally once a month.
Oh, okay.
It would be up to the Board to make that decision, once the Board's created.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Is there a motion to authorize the entering of, into the intermunicipal agreement, Central Massachusetts Regional Equipment Cooperative?
I'd like to make that motion, Madam Chair, to enter into this agreement with the intermunicipal agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Thanks so much for coming in tonight.
Thank you very much, and I look forward to working with you in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item we have is a hearing, a 7:05 hearing, which were passed for the 99 Restaurants of Boston LLC. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open the hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Is there someone here for the 99? What does the Board wish to do?
Continue. Continue. Continue till our next meeting.
Okay. We can, we can continue till the end of the meeting, and then if not, then we'll continue it to the next meeting, just in case someone comes in. So there's a motion to hold this till the end of the meeting?
Motion to hold till the end of the meeting, that's fine.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. But if the meeting, end of the meeting-
Right, well, we'll, yeah.
Do we have to close the hearing before we-
No. No, we don't close the hearing. So we're gonna, we're gonna continue it, and that will allow them, if anyone shows up, to address it tonight. If not, we'll continue it to the next meeting. Okay, we have a, a 710 hearing for D.C. Silver Corp doing business as D.C. Silver Auto Sales and Service Motor Vehicle Class II and Auto Repair License. I'm gonna come back to, yeah. Is the applicant here?
Yeah.
They're both advertised to seven, so, I mean, 710.
How are you?
Good evening.
Good evening to you.
If you could, is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Good evening. If you could give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Mohamed Reza Afshin Danishman, owner of D.C. Silver Corp doing business.
Can you just lift up the microphone a little bit?
Sure.
Thank you.
You can come up to the table here and sit in that chair there, and we'll hear you a little bit better.
Even better.
My name is Afshin Danishman, owner and operator of D.C. Silver Corp, doing business at Silver Auto Sales and Service. We were a licensed repair and sales facility at 603 Southbridge Street in Auburn for over 10 years. And in 2013, we shut down the location, and now we opened another location over at 18 North Oxford Street in Auburn. And I'm here for a Class II motor vehicle license to sell, and also the repair facility.
Okay. I'll open it up to Board questions first. This is down, down here and right near the Sumner Street.
Yeah.
Close to line. You met with the DCG?
What was that?
You met with the Development Coordination Group, and you're familiar with the recommended conditions that they put on your license?
Absolutely.
So we have everything in our packet. The only thing that, that I'm not seeing, and it wouldn't apply to us anyway, but the applicant shall abide the conditions of the zoning variance issued to the property in We, we don't have those conditions in our packet, but it's clear on the recommended conditions that they abide by those conditions of the variance of 1978. So is everything paved, met ever you know?
The area that we're gonna be using, absolutely, yes it is.
Okay, and it's, it's stri, it's lined for-
We haven't, we haven't put lines on, only because of the fact that we weren't sure if you guys were gonna approve it or not.
Okay.
But I can put the lines on-
Okay.
-if you need me to, absolutely.
And, and you have handicap customer spots?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Simontian.
I just, one of the conditions here, shall be no paint or bodywork performed unless the applicant obtains the necessary permits.
We were not looking to do anything.
So you're doing all repairs except for bodywork?
Correct.
Right?
Absolutely.
All right.
So I'm just gonna read the conditions for the record, and if you have any questions on them, please let us know when I finish. All vehicles are to be parked on paved surfaces and arranged per the approved site plan. This shall include customers and employees' vehicles. There shall be no outdoor repair on the property. The applicant will confirm that all fire department permits are in proper order. The applicant shall abide by the conditions of the zoning variance issued to the property in 1978, and I would recommend that you get a copy of those conditions.
Absolutely.
There shall be no paint or bodywork performed unless the applicant obtains the necessary permits. There shall be no use of floor drains that do not meet DEP standards. And the applicant shall be limited to five cars for sale on the property at one time.
Yes, thank you.
And did you have your hours of operation in here? Just checked out. What are your, what are your proposed hours of operation?
8:30 to 6:00.
8:30 to 6:00, how many days a week?
Six days a week.
Six days a week?
Yep.
Monday through Saturday?
Yeah, on Saturday, we're gonna do 9 to 5.
Okay, so-
So 8:30 to 6:00.
8:30 to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday.
And Saturdays, 9 to 5.
Are there any other questions or comments? Are there any butters? And just for the record, the legal notice was published in the Auburn News on July
So Class II is repair and sale, correct?
What was that?
Class II allows for repair and sale? Is that-
The last what, sir?
The Class II, the Class II license allows for repair and sale?
No, the Class II is just a sale, and then you have a repair license.
Okay. I'm, I don't know, maybe because it's not, typically, there's something in here about not loading and offloading vehicles on the street. I don't know if that just pertains to the businesses that are on like Route 20 and Route 12, or is that-
Mr. Barney, if you could come join us to answer a couple of these questions, please.
Is that the-
Generally, the loading and offloading comes with higher volume dealers-
Okay.
-where the applicant is looking at a maximum of five vehicles. I imagine the majority of the purchases he's making are gonna come in on either a single tow truck bed, or may potentially even be driven onto the lot.
Fair enough, thanks, appreciate it. I'm all set then.
And just one more question, how many employees do you anticipate having?
Just myself and one mechanic.
Okay, thanks. And if there are no butter comments, I will entertain a motion to open the hearing. Is there a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? The hearing is closed. Is there a motion regarding the application?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the recommendee, recommendations of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Thank you, and good luck with your business.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Next, we have the Charter Comcast Cable Television License Transfer Hearing at, and that was scheduled for 710. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Gentlemen, you're welcome to come up, and I'm going to read a rather lengthy statement for the record. I'm sure, go ahead, you can sit down and introduce yourselves, and then I'll read the statement into the record.
Absolutely. For the record, my name is Tim Kelly. I'm Director of Government Regulatory Affairs for Comcast, having an office at 426 East First Street, Boston, Massachusetts 02127. It's great to be here with the CCG.
And I'm Tim Ransberger. I'm the Senior Director of Government Relations for what we call the Northeast Region, which includes New England. My office is located in Grand Rapids, Michigan.
Great, thank you. So I'll read this, this statement into the record. "We will now open the town's public hearing on the June 17, 2014 cable television license transfer application of Charter Communications and Comcast Corporation. The purpose of this hearing is to hear from Charter, Comcast and the public about the proposed transfer of the Auburn cable license from Charter to Comcast. Before getting started, I would like to welcome all those in attendance and welcome both Charter and Comcast. Under applicable law and current license, the license cannot be transferred without the consent of the license issuing authority, which is the Board of Selectmen. Pursuant to applicable law, this hearing shall include consideration of the qualifications of the proposed transferee, Comcast, including whether Comcast has the technical, legal, financial and management ability to assume the obligations of the proposed transfer of Charter. In addition, we would like to confirm for the public and for the record that state law and the transfer application provide, provide that Comcast must assume and comply with all of the terms of the existing Auburn Charter license, which is due to expire in June of 2023. We also want to hear generally about Comcast's commitment to community programming and public educational and governmental access, and to maintaining adequate support for community programming and cable-related needs. We want Comcast, as a, as a possible provider in Auburn, to be aware of and attentive to the importance of Auburn cable TV and its role at the forefront of meeting many public, town and school cable needs. The agenda for this hearing will be as follows. First, we invite opening statements from Charter and Comcast. We respectfully request that Comcast address its management, technical, financial and legal ability to assume the obligations of Charter under the current license, its overall commitment to local programming and public educational and government access, and how operations will continue as they are or change. Finally, questions or comments from the issuing authority and the general public will be accepted. Before proceeding with testimony from Comcast and Charter, I note that we have entered the following document into the hearing record. License Transfer Application of Charter Comcast FCC Form 394 and Comcast Cavaletta dated June 17, 2014, and the newspaper notices published twice and in advance of tonight's hearing, as required by Massachusetts regulations. Any questions or comments for Charter and Comcast should be directed through me, and I will rule whether they are in order. The record of this hearing will be left open until further notice, and members of the public or interested parties accordingly may submit written comments on this license transfer application in care of the Board of Selectmen at, here at Town Hall. We will now commence testimony on Comcast's license transfer application. Good evening."
Thank you, Madam Chair. And through you, as I said before, I'm the Director of Government Regulatory Affairs, some of the roles that I play with- Some of the roles that I play with Comcast is franchise negotiations, making sure we're compliant with our license, and probably the most important part of what I do is I'm a local contact for the community, a liaison of sorts. I want to thank you and the board for hosting this hearing this evening to discuss a transaction between Comcast and Charter. We're really, really excited about the prospect of having the license transferred to us and serve the residents of Auburn. I'm here tonight to share information about our company, which will complement the information you've already received in the Form 394 filing that details the required legal, technical, financial, and management qualifications to serve the town of Auburn as required by state and federal regulations. Comcast is very excited about the opportunity to serve your community. We have a longstanding relationship in Massachusetts and are very proud of the investments we've made for our customers and the communities we serve. Through this transaction, Auburn will be able to take advantage of the most advanced services our current subscribers have access to today. And just to touch on that point quickly, whether you live in Phillipston, Winchton, Templeton, Gardner, Fitchburg, you will have the same services as the communities that I serve in Boston, Somerville, Cambridge, et cetera. So it's, because you live somewhere in the state doesn't necessarily mean that you won't have the same services. They do now. So just talking quickly about some of the innovative technologies that we're bringing forth. Charter customers will benefit from our best-in-class technology and services, including the accelerated deployment of advanced technology such as the X1 Entertainment Operating System and Comcast's Video On Demand Platform, which makes available 50,000 video choices on TV. We also have about 300,000-plus streaming content choices on XfinityTV.com, and we have a Xfinity TV mobile app that shows 35 live streaming channels, plus the ability to download content and watch things live. I, I smile because I have three children, and I have to say that the X1 Entertainment System is a godsend, especially when traveling and looking to have your kids occupied. Not that I suggest that's the only thing you do, you should be to your kids, but truly, it's a remarkable new technology that everyone enjoys now in the greater Boston region. Charter subscribers will also benefit from our newly-launched X1 DVR converter, which I just spoke to. You can take your, you take your movies on the go. Just touching upon our localism and commitment to local communities, we truly are committed to being a local corporate partner. Community investment is a very important part of what we do at Comcast. It's a, it's a core tenet of what we do is, you know, giving back to the community, and it's a priority. Whether it's our local scholarship program, which is called Leaders and Achievers, we just had an event down at the Massachusetts State House in June celebrating students and, and awarding them with $1,000 scholarships, or Comcast Cares Day, which we held at the end of April, is a day of giving back, volunteerism. We, there are about 90,000 employees and families and friends that volunteer nationwide, and now internationally, since we've owned NBC Universal, and we take that charge very seriously. We also support the United Way Boys and Girls Club and other smaller community programs. Our signature community investment program that we're pushing right now is called Internet Essentials. I don't know if you've heard of it, but in essence, it's a broadband connectivity program for low-income folks that have either, have one school-wage child receiving either free or reduced school lunch through National School Lunch Program. It's $9.95, no installation fees, no equipment fees, and students or families can also purchase a laptop or desktop for $149.99. The beauty of this program is that $9.95 is fixed, meaning if you have a first grader and they continually, and the family continues to be eligible for the program, they will, they will have that $9.95 all the way up to 12th grade. Doesn't, there's no price changes, and it's fixed. And we also provide free training, digital literacy training. We do this in Boston and Cambridge and elsewhere in our footprint. So it's probably our signature program out there right now. So tonight's transfer consent hearing is not the first consent hearing we've done. In Massachusetts, we have 200-plus franchises, many of them were acquired, acquired through transfer. So this is something we're very familiar with. We're a very local company. We pride ourselves on open communications with LFAs, Local Franchising Authorities, which is Board of Selectmen. To that end, we look forward to working with the town of Auburn, the Board of Selectmen, to the Local Access Corporation and the folks that run PEG Access, and we respectfully request local consent to this transaction this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Do you want to add anything before we move on?
Mine's gonna be a little briefer. Charter first came to New England in the early 2000s. It was the dream of Paul Allen, one of the co-founders of Microsoft, and his vision was of a wired world. He was obviously one of the leading forces in the computer revolution that's turned everybody's lives upside down over the last 30 or 40 years. He saw cable TV as being the, the main ingredient in that transformation of communication technology. And we've certainly enjoyed our stay in New England. We invested a lot of money into the systems. We have, I think, a state-of-the-art system available to our customers now. We've had a great relationship with the franchising authorities in this part of the country, and it, this is obviously part of a, a more global transaction that's occurring between Comcast and Charter. But I just wanted to make sure that I say thank you, because we've had great support here, and we've had great customer relations, and we're, we're very pleased and proud to have, have served as long as we have.
So could, could you just tell us what happens to Charter's operation in Massachusetts once these are approved?
Right.
You cease to operate in Massachusetts?
And do you want to take that?
Yeah, so the hearing this evening is to literally see if Comcast can come in and step in the shoes, in Charter's shoes. I can't speculate until which is gonna change operationally, but I can say that we've been through, we have 6,400 franchises nationwide.
Give us one second. Are we good?
So, so we, we know how to take over that transfer. As far as the renewal license that you have in place, we have to abide by and honor the four corners of that document. So whatever's in that license won't change, and we'll be obligated to follow through on, on those responsibilities.
So, so, you know, I understand tonight's hearing, we're not, nothing of tonight's hearing involves the renegotiating of the contract we just entered into. It is whether Comcast has the legal, financial, technical, and management ability to obtain this contract. Do members have any questions right now? I know, go ahead.
I do. I don't think, I don't think service-related questions are outside the scope of this, because I, really, just a couple of things that seem to be the biggest concerns of, of some of the folks that, that I talk to. So if this is approved, and Comcast comes in, number one, I, like many people, have a charter as my, not only my cable, but my internet provider, and I have a charter email account, which, you know, I've, do certain online things with. It, you know, it's a way for people to get in touch with me. It's, it's certainly on resumes and things of that nature. So I'm, obviously, it's not gonna be a charter email account anymore, and how, will, you know, will there be some sort of grace period for people, you know, to have those emails follow them to, up to a point, you know, for some sort of switch over? How is that handled so that, you know, people don't lose email? And also, the second part, I'll just ask it all in one, and obviously, you know, I, I have everything in my house set up for Wi-Fi. I, I don't use the cable anymore, can't stand it, don't like to see him, so every, every computer, laptop, whatever, is, is all Wi-Fi. Obviously, you know, I log into the Charter server through my router, and, you know, I have my password set up on, on, on the router and on my laptop. Again, that changeover, will that be, you know, seamless to, or, you know, how is, how is that all play out? Those are the two questions that I heard the most, so I'm just, I'm, I'm asking them here, because I have that same concern as well.
Go ahead. Yeah, sure. With regard to the email, like I said before, you know, this, we've done this before. For informational purposes, I don't foresee a switch over to a Comcast.net email address right away, if at all. We have to figure out how this will impact our new customers and work with them. We've done this with Adelphia, we've done this with other systems that we have stepped in the shoes of that franchise operator, and it's gone very smoothly. We're not looking to make waves, and we'll work with the customer on that.
I agree, alright, I, no, I appreciate it, and please don't take that question as I'm thinking that you're trying to make waves. I, I certainly understand, it's, you know, a concern to-
It's good to get out to the general public so they understand that.
Absolutely. I'll jump in too. I've been, I've been involved, I've been in the industry for 30-some years, and I've been involved since the early days of internet addresses, and there, there do come times when the internet address changes largely because of a change of ownership. I remember in my home state of Michigan, we acquired six different ISPs when we came, when Charter came to Michigan, and it is a process, you don't do it overnight. Obviously, we're in the business of keeping customers happy. There'll be plenty of notice, there'll be plenty of opportunity for people to, you know, let their, let the other, the people on the other end know their, their new address and everything else. And it, it is an evolutionary step, it's not something that you just pull, pull a switch and do. There's a lot more involved to it than that.
I, I appreciate that, thank you.
So what's your plan for customer service and the initial questions, concerns, complaints that would come in under this operation?
Part of this transfer, none of that's changing, meaning locally, operationally, managerially, technically, it will be the same. Not speculating into the future, but if it's, we have to make business decisions and look at things like that, but for the time being, none of that will change. And I will add, because I'm a Comcast guy, I can speak to what we have in the state of Massachusetts, in New Hampshire. We have a retention center dedicated for customer service in Malden. We have a customer service center in Chelmsford, we have a customer service center in Plymouth, and we just opened up a new customer service center in Hudson, New Hampshire, as well as a customer service call center. I should put that word, call center, I'm sorry. Call centers, these are big, huge call centers that we use throughout the Northeast. So a lot of that's local, a lot of the calls that come in locally stay locally-
Excellent.
-with regard to video services.
And now, I know you gave us your card as Director of Government Affairs. Will you be the liaison for each community, or will, you know, as we did with Charter, will we have a liaison representing Auburn?
I don't know what my future is yet for the whole organization. I can tell you right now, I'm in Boston and Cambridge and in that local area. But as I said earlier, we really do push for localism, and we have very good relationships with our local communities. So I don't foresee the town of Auburn not having, you know, a Tom Cohen, or a Tim Kelly, or another Tim, whose last name I forgot. No, that's important, it helps us with our relationships in the community.
Are there any other, Mrs. Proletin?
Yes, I, I'm a little confused how Mr. Simoni has his house wired, and I'm not going there, because I lost him. I think the residents are truly going to be concerned in cost value. How is this going to affect their, speaking on behalf of the town, the cost of monthly bills, and you've basically already addressed it with, with complaints. You know, any type of concerns with Charter in the past, has, you know, there's been large blockouts and, and things like that. How do you foresee?
As far as cost, rate increase, things of that nature, as it relates to this transfer, that there aren't gonna be any.
Okay.
There could be some in the future.
Okay.
But as far as this transfer and what's in it, it's nothing that's going to push a rate increase forward as a result of the transfer. I hate talking about pricing and programming, it's kind of outside the purview of this body, and especially outside of this, but I hope that what I just said kind of answers the question.
Well, we do have a contract to, through, to 2023, so we have nine years remaining on the contract we, we just negotiated, which encompasses some of that information. I, I just want to recognize Bill Sheeble from the LLC, see if, LLC, I'm sorry. Did you want to, no, no, nothing to add? Okay. Do we have any other?
I guess, the last, just based on the opening statements and what was said in here, and, and considering the fact that we have the current contract, there's gonna be no change to any of the local access, you know, these meetings being televised, any of the town meetings, all the, everything that's currently provided will still continue to be-
Whatever funding mechanism or however it's put together in the license, we will honor it and abide by it.
Alright.
We have to.
I appreciate it, thanks.
Mrs. Proletin?
I, I'm not sure if this is the correct form to ask this question, but how is Comcast with closed captioning?
We don't provide closed captioning. Are you speaking for PEG access, or are you speaking in general?
In general, for the consumers.
We do provide closed captioning for our commercial channels.
Okay.
However, we do not provide that for local access programs.
Okay.
And that's actually mandated by the federal government. They're, they're the ones that actually originated that requirement.
That's probably a good thing.
And they haven't been too generous with their funding.
Oh, they don't give us any money. They tell us to spend the money.
Thank you.
Thanks, I'm, I'm all set.
No more board questions? Are there any public comments or questions? Seeing none, I'd also like to recognize Mr. Joe Hamel of the LLC. Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
I, I do not.
Anything else? So we can either continue this hearing, we can close the hearing and vote tonight. We do need, all votes tonight require all three members per the Charter. So it's not just the members present, it's the three members.
Do, is, is this a time-sensitive issue? Does it have to be?
Through the chair, it is my understanding that the hearing had to be held within 60 days of the application being filed, which was June 17th. The municipality has 120 days to make a decision, so you're still well within your timeframe. And it's, but it is my understanding that this license transfer is contingent upon the Time Warner deal getting its federal approval. So it's, the board can take a vote tonight contingent upon what happens at the Time Warner federal level, is that correct?
That's very, very good clarification. The whole deal is predicated on the Comcast-Time Warner cable merger. Once that happens, then the transfers happen. And obviously, we'd love to have consent this evening, but after 120 days, if the board does not act on it, it's deemed approved.
So if we, our next, our next meeting would be early September?
No, we have a meeting the 25th.
Oh, we have the meeting the 25th.
Because we had other-
The 25th would certainly be within the timeframe. Given the fact that it, just my personal opinion, it's, it's something that affects the whole town. I would, I would like to hold it to our next meeting and have all five members of the board here, if, if all five members are actually gonna be here. I wouldn't, I, I, since, since these two gentlemen, both Comcast and Charter had representatives here, that would, that would, you know, as far as, I'd be fine with them not having a representative show up a second time, and we could just have all five members of the board vote, that's my opinion, but if-
Just so we don't, you know, restrict our, our votes. Mr. Carpenter won't be here at the next meeting. And it appears that we're having difficulty scheduling these time-sensitive meetings. And I, I hate to have, I mean, I would like to see as many or a majority, but to tie our hands to say that-
That's fine, if we're not gonna have all five members in, on the- That's fine, if we're not going to have all five members in, on the twenty-fifth, then I'm happy to go for it, and I realize that Mr. Carpenter wouldn't be here for the next one either, so that's fine.
He's made me aware of that, yes.
Nope, I appreciate it, so.
We, we can vote to continue the hearing to the next meeting, there'll be four members, or we can close the hearing and take a vote tonight.
I'm, I'm fine either way, I, if, if we're not going to have five...
I'll entertain a motion. Regarding the hearing, continuing or closing first?
No, we need to either, either close the hearing or, or continue.
We have to close the hearing, then take action on the application tonight, or we continue the hearing and then take action at a future meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. So if we are going to take action, this is the language that we would need to...
The whole thing, huh?
The whole thing.
Okay.
Glad you put your glasses on.
No, that's all right. I make a motion, Board of Selectmen of the Town of Auburn, Massachusetts, acting in its capacity as statutory cable license franchising authority under Mass. General Laws 166A, Section 1, hereby approves the transfer of the Town of Auburn Cable License from Charter Communication and/or current local affiliate Charter to Comcast Corporation and/or affiliate controlled by Comcast Corporation, Comcast, and the transaction and cable license transfer as more particularly described in the Charter Comcast FCC 394, Application for Franchise Authority Consent to Assignment or Transfer of Control of Cable Television Franchise, as filed with the town on or about June seventeenth in the year 2014, and the state, and state the following as reasons therefore. Reason number one, Comcast has stipulated that it will assume and be bound by all of the license obligations in which the existing cable license issued by the town to Charter through the term of said license, which expires on June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Reason two, Comcast has reasonably demonstrated management, technical, financial, and legal qualifications to operate the Auburn Cable System, including but not limited to demonstrating a commitment to community to reasonably support local PEG access community television facilities and related facilities which the town deems to be a management qualification, among others, necessary for operating the Auburn Cable System. Notwithstanding the foregoing, this approval is subject to the transfer and not being effective until Comcast satisfies legally necessary preconditions, if any, to the transfer, including closure of the Comcast-Time Warner Cable Transaction and Comcast receipt of federal government approvals, and if and to the extent the foregoing, and preconditions to closure of the Comcast Charter Transaction. Based on the foregoing and in reliance on any material representations, the Board of Selectmen as franchising authority grants consent to the license transfer from Charter to Comcast.
Is there a second?
Second.
Say discussion.
That isn't even fair.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. We need to sign this tonight.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, nice to meet you all. If you could sign that, please.
Thank you for coming in. Yep, they're signing it now, and we'll pass it back over. Thank you, good night. Does have to be dated, today is not August...
Twelfth, right?
August eleventh. There you go.
Thank you.
Through the chair, I will formally transmit this on behalf of the board, there is a cover letter that's been prepared by Attorney Bill August, who is, does the legal work for the local cable committee, and we will be providing this to the state office that we're required to provide this to early this week, so we'll make sure that we get that off for you tomorrow.
The next item we have is a second-hand license for Hanush Jewelers at the Auburn Mall. Do you want to come up and join us? Same as, good evening. Did you want to join us again? Thank you. If you can just give us your name and address for the record.
Sure, Martin Batar, Hanush Jewelers, 385 Southbridge Street.
Thank you. So this is one of the licenses that need to come in line with the state law for licensing, so it's not done at the end of the year, it's done in May, April, end of April, so, so this is the only other license that we have in town like this, so. Can you address the license application and whether you've had any issues or concerns with this?
Good evening, obviously, no, there's been no issues with Hanush Jewelers at all, you know, you heard that the people from Comcast talk about partnerships with the community and everything, I think one of the unintended benefits of, of this policy has been that it's going to be increased our partnerships or enhance the partnerships that we have, and, you know, Mr. Batar and Hanush are definitely an example of that, he's kind of been proactive, actually, in a couple of cases where he's helped solve a case in, in another community just by being aware of what was being brought in, and quite honestly, operating these licenses occasionally, you do so at somewhat of your own, like, financial peril, because a lot of times the people that are bringing goods to him and unbeknownst to him, they might be stolen, when it comes time to charge these people, they, they're usually not in a very good financial way, and it's very difficult to get any kind of restitution out of them through the court, so essentially, he's out that money because either us or another police department comes and recovers the property, and we're not paying them, so, you know, I'm sure it's somewhat profitable, although we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be doing it, but in essence, it's been, it's been an excellent partnership, I think, and he's been helpful and responsive to anybody, either from our town or other towns that have been in.
And of course, I forgot to introduce you, of course, I just invited you up, Detective Sergeant Mills is here with us from the Auburn Police Department. Do members have any questions or comments?
Actually, just have one comment, kind of on what Detective Sergeant Mills just said, because I've spoken with Mr. Batar a few times, and I know that you have had situations where you've lost money, but I, I will say that Sergeant Mills tonight, Chief Salukas and Sergeant Laurie before have all said that, you know, you've cooperated all with the town, and you've kind of been the example, so, you know, I, I just want to say I appreciate that, because that's, you know, that's the kind of thing that we hope for whenever, you know, all the business licenses that we grant, I, I think, you know, to just consistently have businesses that you hear, you know, they're working with the town, they're doing good things, I appreciate it, so thanks.
And, and I just want to remind members that you were here also at a, at a hearing that we had to have to take action, and I appreciated your comments and input, and you were here in support of Chief Salukas at evening, and as Mr. Simoni and said, you know, it's the constant city businesses who work with the police department, who we, we don't have a concern with you having this license, but you certainly understand why we needed to put such a comprehensive policy in place because of the issues that we've had in the past.
I do.
Are there any other board members, questions or comments, are there any public comments or question? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it, failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license, render it null and void, and with the recommendations of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted, thank you so much for coming in, thank you.
Thank you, my pleasure.
Sergeant Mills.
Excuse me, sir, you having a tax-free weekend?
Come and get your Altonani.
So do we have anyone besides ninety-nine waiting, what's Mr. Mitchell waiting for?
I don't believe he's waiting for me, just a minute.
Are you with the ninety-nine restaurant?
Yes.
Okay, we... Oh, no.
Oh, man.
Oh, no. Okay, so we continue the hearing, is there a motion to reopen the hearing?
Do we, motion to reopen, I...
Okay, if you want to come up, please.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, good evening.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
So where were you?
I was down the hall at the other meeting.
For help?
Might have been more exciting, I don't know.
If you could just give your name and just business address for the record, please.
Donna Maderas, 793 Southbridge Street, Auburn, Massachusetts.
And the reason you're here tonight?
I guess the, I was asked to come here, we have a, like, a license change with our president retiring.
Okay. And this has gone through the AVCC. It's pretty standard, we just require that the, that a representative of the license be here. This is a change in beneficial interests of the license. And in your packet you have the offices and managers of the ninety-nine restaurants. It's pretty standard, what we've done, no change in manager, no change in operation. And that's when we have the questions, when we have a change in manager. Pretty standard, no questions or comments, are there any public question or comments? Is there a motion to...
Motion to oppose the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted, is there a motion regarding the application?
Motion to approve the change of directors slash officers for ninety-nine, ninety-nine Restaurant of Boston at 793 Southbridge Street.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted, thanks so much for coming in, sorry, sorry you were in the wrong room for...
That's right.
Well, I'm glad we waited for you. So we're kind of jumping around on our agenda here, I just want to check everything. Board of Selectmen, John, so we are up to a vote on the maximum useful life of departmental equipment for borrowing purposes fiscal year 2015 capital, and in your packet you have the list, and I'll let Ms. Jacobson address this.
Through the chair, this is a standard vote that is taken prior to the town going out to borrow for the capital improvement items that were approved at the May town meeting, this is done every year in advance of our preparation for the bond issuance. The items that you see before you were voted at the May of 2014 annual town meeting, and it represents FY15 CIP items. We are required, based on bond counsel, to define the maximum useful life, as you can see, the first item is a town clerk item for book repairs that was voted at a town meeting, and the additional items that were voted at a town meeting that you see before you are all school items, and they've requested that the maximum useful, useful life be defined as five years, again, that's a requirement when you go out to borrow, it's a vote that we take every year on the borrowing. Just ahead of time, just to let you know, we are planning right now, we've been working on our bond rating for several months, updating our official statement, preparing our financial statements, and I believe our meetings with Standard and Poor's and Moody's would be August twenty-eighth for a borrowing approximately mid-September. Oh, I, one last thing I should mention, these items, the last two where you see a cross-out, the school department wanted to define them, it's the same equipment that was voted on at town meeting, it's just the way that they define it, rather than special education equipment, it's technology equipment, it's the same that was voted, and rather than an iPad initiative, it's an iPad one-to-one initiative, so we're just further clarifying what this is.
Are there any comments or questions? And the vote does not have to be what's in your hand, it's in your packet here, the proposed motion.
Would this be the language that would be used to accept this?
The, the, I move that the maximum useful life of departmental equipment, is that where you're at?
Yes.
Yes.
That would be, okay.
And we would need to read that whole section there.
Correct, through the chair, the town clerk is actually the one, actually, I take it back, the clerk of the Board of Selectmen, which is Sharon Wiatowski, is the one that actually signs off on this, and she is just certifying that the votes that were taken were both taken at town meeting and taken this evening. Again, it's just, this is prepared for us by bond counsel and our financial advisors at Unibank, and it's verified by the school department for their items, as well as the town clerk for the book repair item.
So the proposed motion is on the top of, the page three of your agenda.
I'd like to make a motion that the maximum useful life of the department, departmental equipment listed below to be financed with the proceeds of $326,000 school equipment bonds, and that the $15,000 departmental equipment book repair bonds authorized by the vote of the town passed May sixth, 2014, Article Three, is hereby determined pursuant to GL Chapter forty-four, seven-nine, to be presented on the list, the attached list, as provided by the treasurer and collector.
Is there a second?
Second for discussion, I have one question.
Sure.
I, I don't know if this can be answered or if superintendent, I, book, book repairs, five years. That one just kind of jumps out at me only because it seems like, how can you, how can you say that a book repair will last for five years?
Through the chair, this is, that particular item is the town clerk for book repairs, and this was establishing the maximum useful life, you cannot go beyond ten years, and generally you don't go under five, when, you cannot go under five for a CIP borrowing, so the book repairs have to last, have to be estimated to last a minimum of five years or it's not eligible for CIP borrowing, so...
We're talking about school books, right?
No, this is the town clerk's office.
Oh, okay.
The book repairs is a town clerk's item, so it is a variety of books within her office that she's required to keep for decades.
All right, that's fine then, I thought we were talking about school, all school equipment.
The remaining items are all school.
Okay, all right.
So...
I'm all set.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion passes. Next in your packet, we have election worker appointments 2014, 2015, enclosed is the list provided by the town clerk. These are the recommended appointments by the town clerk for 2014 through 2015 elections, effective September one, 2014, to August thirty-one, 2015.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the list as presented, with the exception of Patricia Joyce.
Is there a second?
No.
I'm not going to single out one. So the motion doesn't get a second. Is there another motion?
I'd like to make, like to make a motion, excuse me, on accepting the list, the I'd like to make a motion, excuse me, on accepting the list as is.
Is there a second? The chair will second it. We need all three votes for the motion to pass. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
The motion fails. Send that back to the clerk. We have gift acceptance in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, for the Department...excuse me, Department of Developmental and Inspection Services from Michael and Amy Zakarian in memory of their dog Maggie, and the amount of $15 designated use for the Kathleen Sabina Animal Compound.
I'd like to make a motion to accept with gratitude.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. And for the fire department gift account and the amount of $200 from Mastermans.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. So, moving on, we have proclamations. I put it under...Mr. Carpenter asked that this be put on, but we, in general, just put all proclamations under proclamation, so it would be a vote on a proclamation for Anne Weston. She recently resigned from the Conservation Commission after 25 years of service. And so Mr. Carpenter has asked that we prepare a citation, a proclamation to recognize her 25 years.
Make a motion to authorize the proclamation as requested.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. So the next item we have is a discussion and potential vote regarding the scheduling joint meeting of these, to fill the school committee vacancy. And as members probably know, I've tried, we've tried to schedule this meeting in the month of August, and it's been impossible to...the motion was for all five members to be present for this appointment. We have been unable to schedule a joint meeting with the school committee to make this appointment, and I just, I really don't want to see the Board of Selectmen holding up this appointment because we took a vote that all five members need to be present. And I also don't think that where it's a joint appointment, and you're also involving, at this point, three applicants for the position, that we just present one date and say, this is it, you know, you have to be there. So I bring this to your attention. According to the charter, our votes have to be three members. And so we've always had votes with three members, and to tie our hands with five members, I just, I think it's just going to continue to be a struggle to schedule this. So I would entertain a motion that we allow the scheduling of the meeting with a majority of the Board of Selectmen, but certainly I'm going to make every effort to make all members available. But I just don't want to see our board holding up this appointment.
I think that's fair enough. And we...I understand the reason for, you know, wanting the whole Board of Selectmen there. You know, it'd be great to have the nomination come from all of us, and I certainly would also, you know, like to see that happen. But I also understand, you know, people have obligations, summertime, vacations, things, family obligations, work obligations. So, you know, I don't think anyone is going to be upset if we have to agree on a date where, you know, one or two of us can't make it, and as you said, not to hold up the appointment because of it. So I'm okay with that.
Okay.
And I will say, you know, I know I've...I had some discussion with Sharon, as we all did, about some of the dates, and, you know, I'm pretty much available the rest of the month, except for the next three Fridays. So, because, you know, my vacation plans didn't pan out the way I had hoped, so I'm just taking some long weekends.
So you potentially are available for that Wednesday, the last Wednesday of the month that we had looked at?
I think that's the 27th, or somewhere around there. Yeah.
We'll shoot out the email again, because I believe that date was actually a date that everyone...so I'd entertain a motion to move forward with the scheduling of the meeting. Do we have to amend the last motion, or should we have a new motion?
I don't think it was specific to a date.
Because you just...
It was at a date when all five members...
Right, right. So do we need to amend that motion to schedule a meeting that a majority of the vote board? Because we can vote to reconsider, because all members voted. So is there a motion to reconsider that vote?
We don't need the person who made the motion in the second to reconsider?
No, just someone who voted in the majority.
In the affirmative, that's right.
In the majority.
Motion to reconsider the motion to have all five members of the board present at the school committee appointment.
Second.
Second. So we're into a motion to reconsider the vote. So now we can amend the vote to re...
If we reconsider, we could just actually create a new motion, correct? Rather than try to amend what was previously... So we have to vote first on the motion to reconsider, correct?
Yes, yes.
So, aye?
Aye. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. So now I'll entertain a motion that we, the chair, work with the chairman of the school committee to schedule a joint meeting under Mass. General Law for the joint appointment of the vacancy created by Mr. Laurie.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Hopefully that'll make your life a little easier, Sharon trying to work with me to schedule this.
For the chair, just to clarify, do you want Sharon to try to find two dates to give to the school committee as opposed to one?
I think that would be reasonable, and we are meeting. Right. Right, just I don't want to be, you know, the committee that says you have to meet with us on this night, not just the committee, but the three members, the three residents who have put in a letter of interest. So, thank you for that. We are...just want to make sure, because we've bounced around on the agenda before we move on to town manager items, I just want to make sure we've covered all of our items. Gift acceptance, proclamations, vote to reconsider. We have town manager items, and we have one Board of Selectmen item. So, Ms. Jacobson.
Through the chair, thank you very much. The first item, and I will not read it, nor ask any of you to read it, is a memo on the...
Appreciate it.
You're very welcome. Wind turbine, alternative, and renewable energy committee. This is just basically a follow-up to a discussion that took place at the last Board of Selectmen meeting. The chairman of the Wind Turbine, Alternative, and Renewable Energy Committee, Mr. Bob Patoukas, came before the committee and discussed some options that they were looking at, and some concerns he had with regard to obtaining a quorum. So this is just a report. The board asked me to get back to them with more information, because there's been some discussion over whether the committee can and should look at solar in addition to wind. And just to summarize it, the town meeting vote that established the committee did not specify whether the...it was held...excuse me, I'll back up. The committee was established by a vote of a special town meeting that was held on October 27th, 2008. The Article 13 that created the committee did not specify how many members of the committee we needed to have. At that time, the former acting town manager appointed five members. As you can see from the history, and it's...I told you, I promised you I'd come back and follow up with what my comments were when Mr. Patoukas asked, and I just wanted to check, because sometimes my memory isn't so good. I went back and checked. We did have an additional resident that had asked to be on the committee the following year, and I appointed that additional resident, because it is difficult to always get a quorum. So we appointed that resident, and then advertised for a seventh seat. So they would be a seven-member committee. The next year, we did get another application, which would have been seven members, but one of the original five then didn't want to be reappointed. So we were back to six. So this year, we have, right now, we had four members when Mr. Patoukas came forth, and he was concerned about a quorum. And I'm happy to say that after that meeting, we received two applications to be on the committee. We reached out to both applicants. I did speak to Mr. Patoukas. The board asked me to talk to him about what would be best. I told him, it's certainly fine by me whether you want five or seven. I explained that we had two applicants, and if you wanted five, then we would have to reject one of them. So he agreed that we would offer seats to both of them, because it is hard to get residents to participate. And if they're willing to participate, why not let them on the committee? And then we'll advertise for the seventh seat, which I want to thank Auburn Mass Daily for their help in advertising for us and writing some stories, and I think it has generated some interest. So we did appoint one of the persons. We did reach out to the second one, and we have not received any feedback from them. And, you know, it's vacation time, so maybe they're away on vacation. If the second person does not want to be on the board, then as it stands now, there are five members, and we would keep it at five. If another person did want to be on it who applied, we're willing to put them on it, and we'll advertise for a seventh member. And I just, Mr. Patoukas had mentioned some of the studies that he wanted the board to have. I know we had provided a couple of those studies to the board in the past. I resent them electronically, because they were extensive, especially the WPI studies. Mr. Bernie had provided me with links that I forwarded to the board, so you have those. And in your packet, there was one additional study that we did not have available to us electronically, so it's in your packet. And this is the wind power in Auburn. It was citing considerations for the wind turbine. So at this point, the board has seen all of the studies. This memo does explain that not all, as a matter of fact, none of the studies until we got to the new CEC study have actually looked at the impact and the economy of putting a wind turbine there. The other citing studies were based on the fact that it was a good location to put in that tower, but they did not get into whether there was enough energy that would be generated to make it economical. So as a follow-up to one of the last questions I think the board had us look into was, where do we stand with the state? And as you know, admittedly, it's been a little frustrating. We've been trying to get a response for approximately a year now, it was last August of 2013. And I'm happy to report that Mr. Bernie was able to, and he's been very persistent, I would say, contacting the state, and he was able to get a response from the state. And it looks like they're getting ready to move forward on the next steps. So I think finally we're able to move forward, which would be on the business plan, and again, on a grant that we received for an acoustical study, both of which are key to making a decision if the board and the town wants to go forward on a wind turbine. But I think to make such a decision prior to getting those studies done would be premature. We've got to complete the process. Also in here, just for the public to know, and I know you've seen it, but we do have two net metering credit agreements that are going to provide about 90% of the, are going to take up about 90% of the town's capacity on electric. So for now, obviously, that can change with the new middle school. We may have more power coming online and more opportunities for wind and solar. But right now, we do have two net metering credit agreements. As far as we know, both are moving forward. We have had, you know, in the past, a couple of net metering credit agreements that were not able to finally get their approvals to the national grid, and these two both seem to be moving along. I don't want to guarantee it until it's in place, but it looks like it's going to move forward. So the last piece would be that the committee, as established, was established to look at alternate energy as well as wind. So it seems to be perfectly appropriate for the committee to go forward and look at solar as well as wind, and make some recommendations. I did have a good conversation with the chair, and suggested that, well, he was looking for ideas from what he, what we wanted the chair to do. And I said, you're the chair, you can make the agenda, but if you're looking for some recommendations and ideas for the town, it would be great to look at municipal aggregation opportunities that are available to the town, as well as to start helping us move forward in the preparation of a climate action plan. We did have two WPI-IQP student studies that were done on that, but a climate action plan actually can't be put together just by an administration. It has to be a collaborative effort of different elements of the community. You actually have to have a committee, and you have to have different components to it. So that would be a good thing for the committee to take on and start moving forward on, as well as looking at some alternatives for municipal aggregation. Are there some legitimate cost-saving groups that are out there that we may want to look at? So the chair was happy to do that, said he'd be looking forward to having a meeting soon, and now he does have five members. And I just want to acknowledge, Mr. Mitchell, sitting here, is a member of the committee, and has been a member for the last couple of years. And I want to thank Adam Bernie for all the work he did on the solar and the wind. And it's a long process, but I have to say that over the last couple of years, between the Green Community designation, the grants we've received, and the savings that we anticipate netting from the net metering credit agreements, the town will be in good shape as far as the use of alternate energy.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks.
Any members have anything on that?
Just one thing. From the first time I sat in on one of the alternative energy committees, that was my understanding from day one, that they were going to explore any possible options of what was out there. And, you know, I would love to see that. And my only concern was that, you know, we had moved forward to a degree with the wind turbine, and I just didn't want to see all the work that had been done get bogged down as...you know, I'm sure, you know, that it's not easy for them. I'm sure it's not easy for Mr. Bernie to, you know, in a sense, you'd be spearheading multiple projects at the same time, looking into the different options that are available. So I do understand that. You know, managing multiple projects is never easy. But that was my only, that was my only concern in bringing it up a couple of times, was just that, you know, all of the work we had done to this point on the wind was not getting lost in the shuffle as we pursued. And I understand. I mean, I myself, you know, in, you know, a couple of years past, just reading different news articles about towns that have implemented, I've actually talked to some of the selectmen in other towns that have done, you know, and asked them, you know, how long was the process? What did you have to go...just to kind of get an idea of what we might be up against as some of these, you know, some of these things are brought to us from that committee. And, you know, I think that it's a great opportunity to have that committee to do, and some of that legwork, and come back with, you know, and advice, as they are an advisory committee, and, you know, make those recommendations. There's, I think everybody understands that with, you know, the technology changes from day to day, almost. Something new seems to pop up in the IT world, and it transmits to another entity, and hey, we can use this for that. And the next thing, you know, things have changed in the matter of a couple of months. So, you know, it's something that's certainly not stagnant. It's going to probably be constantly changing to a degree as new technologies develop. And, you know, again, I know it's not easy, but I'm just happy to see it moving forward. And whatever that recommendation is, whatever's best for the town, that's, you know, that's what I'd like to see come out of the committee. It's a combination of multiple, that's fantastic.
Thank you. The next item we have is in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30B, a vote to declare the main level, first floor of the main building of the property known as Camp Gleason is available for disposition through a lease with use restrictions.
Through the chair, as you know, we've been working for several months, I would say six, seven months, to prepare an RFP for the disposition through a lease of the first floor of Camp Gleason. When I say first floor, I mean the main level. We would like to retain the use and access to the lower level, the basement level, for the DPW. And I know I've spoken about it before. It's been a very complicated process, because we had to follow through all the deeds and transfers of the property all the way back to 1910. And it's been a long process, but we're there. As a matter of fact, today, we, through the help of town council, Bob Henigan, finalized the RFP with the components. So one piece of this is according to Mass. Chapter 30B, which guides the procurement process for all municipalities, the board is required to declare that the area we're looking to lease is actually available for disposition. If it was being sold, you'd call it surplus property, but since we're leasing it, your vote can be taken to say that the first floor of the main building in the property known as Camp Gleason is available for disposition through a lease with use restrictions. And then the vote that you have before you actually explains many of the lease restrictions that we're putting into the RFP. I would tell you, it's not all of them. And the reason it's not all of the restrictions, there are additional ones, is because at some point, as town council advised us, we have to leave some of them open for negotiation, should we get a proposal in place that we want to have a little bit of leeway with. Excuse me. These are the conditions that we wanted to make sure were part of the restrictions on the lease of that property. We do not have to have a town meeting vote for any part of this. As you know, we had this on the town meeting agenda, I think of May of 2013, and then, or it could have been the fall. And then we pulled it off when there was a question that was raised about who had oversight of the property. So as a result of that, it is under the town charter. Town manager has the ability to lease and use and have oversight of the property. to lease and use and have oversight of the property. But anytime there's a disposition, which a lease is a disposition as much as a sale is, the Board of Selectmen actually would be the one that will ultimately sign that, just like you did for the 121 Southbridge Street, and you also are the ones that would vote to declare the property, even in the case of a sale surplus, in the case of a lease, available for disposition. I just do want to let the board know that I did go before the Conservation Commission last month and explain what it is we're trying to do. We don't need to have a vote from them, but way back in 1948, I believe, as part of one of the transfers, one of the town meeting votes stated that the property would be under the custody of the Conservation Commission. So, Town Council went through and did all the reviews and came back and said that technically that is, that no vote is needed, that the Conservation Commission, under the new charter, and as a matter of fact, under the charter even back in the seventies, was, it would fall under the town for the maintenance of this. So, I just went and explained it all to the Conservation Commission, told them that we're, clearly, we have, in the RFP, we've asked that the proposals do not have any environmental impacts on the area. That's important to us as it is to the Conservation Commission. So, they are aware of it. They're aware that it's going out. We advertised today, well, we put a notice in today to the Central Register, and that will be, I think, in a couple of days, that will come out. I think August 17th might be the notification in the Central Register. We have to do it twice. There's a whole list of procurement things that we have. We will make the RFP available on our website. The notification gets put twice in the Central Register as well as twice in the local newspaper. So, those dates will be coming up. And Adam, do you recall the date that we're asking for the proposals to be submitted by? Is it the end of September?
Yeah, I think it's the 29th.
Okay. So, the proposals will be due at the end of September, and it is on the RFP pages. I think it's Monday, the 29th at noon, and then we would open the proposals at that point and start reviewing them. So, this evening, we're respectfully requesting that the board declare that we identified exactly what we're leasing. The first floor space is available for disposition through a lease.
So, do we need two separate votes, one to declare that it is available for disposition through a lease with restrictions, and then vote on this?
Through the chair, the vote that you have to take is all in one, that it is available with restrictions, and then the restrictions are listed in the written vote here.
Okay. Mrs. Brellington?
Steve already read one long.
I'm sorry?
Do you mind reading this?
Absolutely not.
Mr. Simoni and Artie read one for us. So, I move in accordance with Mass. General Law.
I just want to make sure that I'm making a motion.
We have to read this entirely?
This is the vote. Okay.
Yeah. Just, I move in accordance with...
In accordance with the Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 30B, the Board of Selectmen hereby declares the main level, first floor of the main building on the property known as Camp Gleason is available for disposition through a lease. The following restrictions will be placed on the reuse and the lease of the property. One, the lease is applicable only to the first floor of the main building and parking areas. Two, use of moss reservoir for recreational or other purposes is prohibited. Three, the town has the ability to utilize property for town purposes during the day from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday with a 48-hour notice, and to utilize the property occasionally in the evenings or weekends if the lessee is not utilizing the property within a 48-hour notification. Number four, the town retains the right to exclusive use of the basement level for storage of town-owned equipment, facility management workshop, and other uses pertinent to town operations. Five, the lessee's use of leased space will not have any environmental conservation impacts. Six, the lessee is responsible for the payment of all utilities in the leased space, and such costs must be paid separately by the lessee. The board further recognizes that the town manager may impose further restrictions as she may deem necessary in the best interest of the town.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Simoni?
Since we will be leasing the property, just a couple of things. Will we assume responsibility for repairs, the building being up to code? Any liability, you know, if someone's hurt, or God forbid worse, on the property, you know, what exactly will the town be responsible for as far as all that?
Certainly. The RFP specifies, I'll take one at a time, so...
Sure.
Let me know if I missed one. The first one is the repair and maintenance. The repair and maintenance of the building would be the responsibility of the lessee, obviously not for the entire space that they're not using because the town's still, it is still a town building, but the repair and maintenance of the interior that they are leasing. There would be a requirement that is in the RFP for indemnification of the town, for damages, insurance, things like that. So, there would have to be an insurance requirement. Any, I think you asked about the code. Any work that needs to be done to bring the building up to code for the specific use that's proposed would be the responsibility of the lessee. So, the building is up to code, but if the use shall change or anything else needs to be done because of a proposed use, that would be the responsibility of the lessee. The lessee is also responsible for any local state and federal or quasi-public permits, licenses, or any type of approvals that they may need from local boards and commissions. The lease, excuse me, the RFP specifies probably about 15 different conditions that have to be met, and then those conditions, based on the proposal that we get, those conditions that can build into a lease that gets negotiated, and the lease is what ultimately gets signed with those types of conditions in it.
And this specifically says use of the reservoir for recreational or other purposes prohibited, and where this says the first floor, that means none of the grounds around the building are available?
Through the chair, the RFP specifies that the parking is available as an accessory use to the proposed use of a lessee, so they will have access to and use of the parking lot. But the map that Adam's office prepared actually identifies the area right around the building as being part of the lease, so obviously, they have access to the building in and out through that area. They could use the beach area, so to speak, near the water, but...
Oh, all right. That's my question. So, the grounds around it are also part of...
The grounds around it are part of it to a degree, not all of it. Through the chair. I'll let Adam explain. He just spent a lot of time working on the map.
I believe the way that the map reads is essentially the driveway and the parking area, and the high water line is sort of the extent of what we're outlining as the lease area, and anything outside of the tree line. So, it's sort of a blob. There isn't a defined geometric shape to it, but if you've been over there, you can fairly easily identify there's an older shed-type structure. So, it'd be everything between that, the high water line, and then the tree line.
Okay.
Back towards the building.
Thanks.
Well, we have a private-public partnership here. Would they be allowed to post signage regarding, you know, trespassing or private property?
Through the chair, the property remains, the property remains public property. So, any signage that we put on it would certainly have to still follow the sign regulations. The RFP specifies that any type of signage or any changes to the property have to go through all local approvals. They could not post something that says private property because technically, it's still town property.
Right. So, would they, could you anticipate an issue with an insurer and indemnification for the town if we can't designate it, if they can't designate it for their use?
Through the chair, no. Towns can lease their properties, and insurance can be granted to somebody for town property as long as you identify the space. It's similar to if there's a liquor license, and the licensee has to identify the square footage that the liquor license applies to, and then that licensee goes and gets insurance based on the square footage that they use. So, we have a similar situation where the farmland that is off of Packerchog, where we went and got estimate bids, quotes, to lease that out for farming purposes, we require that they have insurance on it, and it is still town property. They have a license to use the property, and they were able to get insurance from their insurance company. And it's a good question because the licensee was concerned that they were not going to be able to get insurance because it was town property, but they can get it.
So, the public has access to public property, town property?
But this would be, they would be leasing the inside of the building, so the public wouldn't have access to a locked facility because that would be under lease. So, the first-floor premises that they're leasing is, I guess I would call it quasi-public property. When they're using it, and it's under their lease, it's under their restriction. The only one that can use it is then the town with notice, and at that point, the town is liable for anything that happens during the hours that the town uses it, just like it would be now.
Yeah. So, we often see people fishing down there. And it is public property that they can do that. Do, will the, will the lessee have any rights to prohibit people, you know, if they're having an event or whatever, prohibit people from coming on this public property is my question.
They, they will be leasing a certain part of the public property, so when it is, I'm hesitant because I haven't seen a proposal yet.
Okay.
We have talked to a couple of different, actually, one organization we know is very interested, and that's, you know, we are going out to bid to make sure we follow all the state bidding requirements. I don't know what they're going to be proposing, what anyone would be proposing, so it's hard to answer it specifically. I can just say, in general, when it, whoever it is that ends up leasing this, while they're leasing the building, it is not open to the public unless they want it to be open to the public.
The building, right. And I just want to...
The building or the access, you know, they have the ability to use the parking lot to support an event. If they were to lease it and they want to have an event there, they are able to use the parking lot.
Just in fairness to anyone, any proposed lessee, you know, that they're aware that there's still access to the remainder of the property.
There is. They're not leasing the entire property. There's, I can't recall how many acres there are, but this particular area that we're outlining is a very small area considering the whole property.
Okay.
And a lot of the details that you're asking about would be outlined and identified in a lease, which is why it gets negotiated, because if there's, needs to be some kind of changes made, once we get a proposal, at that point, we would either talk to Town Council, or the lessee would talk to their insurer and see what we need to do to make it happen.
Okay. Is there anything else? We have a motion.
One last question. Kind of in the same vein, under the state law, are there any, even if someone is leasing that property, are there any restrictions on what types of events they can have? I mean, so, for instance, could somebody who's leasing the property have a yard sale, a garage sale? I mean, could they use town property even though they're leasing it to that type of thing?
Under the proposal, under the RFP, the proposal would have to identify what the use would be, and based on that, the lessee would be responsible for getting the appropriate permit. So, if someone did want to come in and use it to have a yard sale, they would still have to follow the exact same process that everyone else has to. If somebody wanted to use it for, you know, an organizational meeting, they still have to follow whatever the town regulations are.
So, because they're leasing the property, it doesn't exempt them from having to get any type of permits to do that?
That's right. They're still required to have it.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you. I'm all set.
So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. So, the last item under Town Manager item is to apply for and accept funds from the State Executive Office of Elder Affairs for a Formula Grant in the amount of $31,896.
Thank you very much. This is our annual Formula Grant that we have that funds some of the operations at the Senior Center. The amount is determined by the state based on population and other factors that go into the Formula Grant. We, I want to note that our new Senior Center Director began last Wednesday, Minion Murray, and I want to, at this time, also thank Cheryl Westerman for all the work that she's done as the acting director while we were in the interim process of hiring. Minion Murray will be coming in on the 25th to meet the board, just to say hello, so I'll be able to introduce you to her. She and Cheryl worked to put this together collaboratively. Cheryl had done much of it prior to Minion starting and held off on finalizing it just in case the new director wanted to make any types of tweaks. But this is a standard application that we put in every year, and I believe it's due at the end of this week.
Are there any questions or comments? Is there a motion? To authorize?
I'll make a motion to apply and accept the funds from the State Executive Office of Elder Affairs.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted?
Through the chair, if you don't mind. I do have one more. It's not really an item, but I do, would like to get your signature while you're here. At the last board meeting, you had approved of the transfer of the deed of 121 Southbridge Street, and again, that was another case where we RFP'd it. We got a great proposal, and we're hoping to close, Adam, this Thursday. Thursday, we had to note, we had to put it in the Central Register, and to do so, we need your signature. So, you already did vote on this, so it's just a matter of signing it. It's the quick claim deed.
Do you have anything else?
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, my God.
You signed it in the wrong place?
Oh.
Okay. Thank you.
Wow. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Yikes.
We're going to just move on to...
I need the reset button.
So, Mr. Carpenter couldn't be here tonight, but he did send an email. I believe that you have it in your packets. So, in addition to the proposed proclamation, which the board approved, Mr. Carpenter asked that the board consider hosting a reception similar to Mr. Grossman's with invitations sent out from the office. He expects to have an agenda item the next time he is here to establish a policy to cover this procedure, so the board can take action on his request tonight. I don't know that there's an urgency. We can wait until Mr. Carpenter is here to address it further, but his request is to host a reception similar to the one of Mr. Grossman's.
I, I don't have any problem with the reception, but Mr. Carpenter will be here to speak to it.
Yeah, I mean, I can't see that we're going to be scheduling it in the near future anyway, so...
That's fine.
We can, we can address everything.
I made a motion to hold it until Mr. Carpenter is present.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? We're going to try it again. Here, go ahead. You go first, and then send it back. We'll give it to Mrs. Brellington.
All right. There you go.
Can I borrow your pen, Mr. Simoni? I let Mr. Simoni borrow it.
Is there any additional public comment while we're waiting on this?
Actually, no, that's all right. Just three, three quick things. One, I'd just like to say a quick word about Mr. Rick Patterson. A lot of people in town know him. He spent a lot of time in youth basketball. He recently passed away, and he was always down at the high school, always greeted folks with a smile, just a wonderful, wonderful guy, and he did a lot for the youth in Auburn, and I just wanted to quickly acknowledge that. The second thing, last night, I had the opportunity to go to a wonderful event out in Charlton for a group of World War II veterans, and wow, I learned something that, interesting and kind of sad at the same time, that we're losing roughly 1,000 a day of our World War II veterans. And I, I got to tell you, these folks, I mean, they're, you know, it's a hospice-slash-senior living area, and these folks, a lot of them are wheelchair-bound, and these are our veterans from World War II.
from World War II, and they are just a phenomenal group of people. And it was my honor, my pleasure, to be able to go out there and spend some time with them. There is no doubt in my mind why they were called the Greatest Generation, but I just wanted to say a couple words. That was just phenomenal to spend some time with those people. And the last one, unfortunately, is several weeks since it happened, I haven't seen anything else in the news, and I just wanted to bring it up, because it's kind of a disappointment to me. There was, I believe it was early January, there was a story in both the Worcester Paper and I believe the Almond Daily regarding the damage that was done over at the Jewish cemetery. And I just wanted, if anyone knows anything that will help the police, I would just ask them to please contact. You know, that's one of the sites where one of our town markers is. I spent some time up there last year with Mr. Ethier locating that marker, and he, you know, gave me quite an extensive, as he did through the whole time, but just, you know, some information about the cemetery itself, the surrounding area, how it used to be accessed by the horse-drawn hearse. And I was really, really just disheartened to read that in the paper, and I'm just asking if anybody, if, you know, if those people are still out there, if anyone knows anything, to please just get in touch with the police. I mean, it's really a shame that stuff like that goes on. So those are my three things, and thanks for, you know, giving me a few minutes to address those.
Thank you.
Through the chair, if you could just, this is the interministeral agreement that you voted on earlier this evening. So while you're here, I thought if you could sign that.
And I can sign any.
And the last item we have are the minutes. We have the minutes of the Board of Selectmen, December 9th, December 23rd, December 30th, January 13th, February 10th, February 24th, and March 10th. We also have the January 29th meeting minutes of the joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and School Committee. If there are no corrections or omissions, the chair will accept them as presented. Hearing none, the chair will accept them as presented. If there's no other business before the board, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Sake.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.